All right. Let me call the Westwood School Committee meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, where we just stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us, Ian. Before we get started, given that Charlie has joined remotely, we should just do a role call of who's here. Charlie Donahue.
Here.
Mayor Plonkin.
Here.
Dorian Parmally.
Here.
Amanda Phillips.
Here.
And Anthony Mullen here. Great. Well, welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Great. We're going to get started with a number of questions, but Mayor, you want to go ahead?
Sure. Okay. Welcome.
Thank you.
So what are the core values that drive you as an educator and what core values would you like to see in the staff you hire?
That's a good question. You know, I'll go right to curiosity is a core value of mine. You know, as I think that drives all my work. I mean, so I think, you know, when I, when I approach any situation, anything, I'm thinking of five yesterday that I was managing, but you have to approach your work as an educator with curiosity. You have to be seeking to understand who, who are the people in front of me? What are their needs? What are their hopes for whatever situation we're in? Whether we're in a classroom and looking at, you know, talking to parents about, you know, what is, what is your hope for your child this year? And what kind of goals do we want to set together or likewise for a school as a principal or as a superintendent in a district? I just think you've got to be incredibly curious and so, you know, kind of playing that out to what do I hope to see in my staff, whether it be our leadership team or our principals or educators or paraprofessionals or frankly, our cafeteria staff, our, our front office secretaries and clerical staff? Like, you've got to be curious. You just have to approach everything with that. So I think that that's really incredibly important to me and I think that that really builds into another value, which is, you know, kind of optimism. You know, if, if you're curious and you learn and you listen, you, you can maintain optimism for the future, right? Like, you just have to always be looking for what is that opportunity? What can we, even in a difficult situation like, like right now where we are grappling with like, we've got to rebuild our turf field and we may have to move graduation. That is a really difficult situation, but like people can get, people are getting upset about the idea that we may have to do that to rebuild this field. But I'm optimistic that like, we're going to find a good solution and like, people have real concerns and we, we need to listen and we just need to hear and we're going to find a path that works for everyone. But we have to remain optimistic that we'll do that and we have to remain open to the idea that like, people are going to come to the table because they want good things for kids. And we can learn something from them. So again, that curiosity, that optimism and just opportunity. Again, I know it's a, it's a, just an important value. We have to find it all the time. It's there. And then courage. We have, we have to have courage. That's a value of mine because sometimes, you know, leading through challenge or just leading in general, it requires you to be courageous and our educators have to be courageous, our parents have to be courageous because sometimes situations are challenging. So those are, those are what drive my work and I want to see those and I model those all the time for my leadership team and our principals and certainly for our educators. So yeah, I would say those are my, that's what, that's what really defines me, I would suggest.
Okay. And sort of following up on that, what are some of the characteristics you have found have been consistent among the most effective educators?
I think, you know, the most effective educators in my travels, that they are unbelievably empathic. They, they seek, again, they, they really seek to get into the shoes and the heads of the people that they serve, not only the children, but the families too, right? They, they want to understand how they can craft, shape their practice to meet the needs of the person in front of them, right? And I think those people are highly effective, not only because they do develop a deeper understanding of the people that they serve, but also it just builds, it just builds such great partnership and it builds trust, it builds relationships. So I think that that also, you know, when, when you are, when you have a high degree of empathy, you can build trusting relationships. And I think that's, you know, I think that's the foundation of like, everything we do as humans in our endeavors, but in this world of education, it's critically important. I think, you know, effective educators and leaders are also very clear in their work and just, again, it's, it's, you know, getting down to simple things like, you know, it can be clarity in terms of learning expectations for the day, clarity in terms of, I mean, I remember being an elementary educator, clarity in terms of like, when exactly are things happening and how's that schedule going to look so that kids know what to predict and are, have a consistent and continuous and safe schedule. But also, you know, being clear in just general expectations, like, you know, meeting with the principals yesterday afternoon and just, hey, remember April 1st is right around the corner. I need your draft school improvement plans next week, in whatever format they're in. Just, it's okay, but I need them so that we can review them. So again, I just think that like clarity is key. So I would suggest that those two are, there are a million others, but I think those two are really critically important.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Great. So you've, you know, been in a lot of districts, most recently, I guess Dedham, Natick, Needham. You know, every town's a little different. So what, you know, as you think about Westwood, you know, what challenges do you think, you know, Westwood presented and what actually, you know, strengths could you bring from your other diverse experiences?
So that's a great question. I, you know, I would suggest that, you know, as you said, every community is very different and I think that is a strength that I have gained over time. It's just that simple recognition, right? So when, when we had, when, when I had my first interview, I talked about this kind of notion of, you know, being, I'm a builder, right? Like, that's, that's part of who I am and part of being an effective builder is, you know, understanding, you know, what are, what are the parameters, what are the materials that you're working with? What is the, you know, what are you trying to achieve? And I think that really, you know, again, I talked about, you know, building a swing, right? And you have to have a vision for that, but you ought to, you have to engage your local community in what that is, right? And how that plays out. And, you know, I use that analogy of the materials, like, who are the people? What are, what is the history in this community? So I think as, in terms of a strength, you know, whether it was, you know, I was like, as you said, I was at Needham for a good bit. I was in Natick for eight years. I've been in Dedham for seven. I've worked in a couple other communities. And I think just that like, the same principles apply no matter where you are, right? That, like I said, you know, if you're optimistic, if you're curious, you're, you're going to do well for that community. How that plays out and what that turns into are very different things. I mean, I certainly, I am really, you know, as we think about opportunity in Westwood, I'm really looking forward to today to learn more about what are, what are the needs of the community? And I would certainly, I'm not the, I don't want to, I don't want to dodge the question. I think it's, you know, what I can, I mean, I've reviewed dozens of documents. I've watched a whole lot of school committee meetings. I have a really good sense of what's going on. And as I was saying during my interview, like, everything looks really thoughtful and strategic and carefully planned and really focused on kids. So what, what, I mean, those, like, it would appear as though all of the right structural and systematic pieces are in place. So it would appear as though perhaps, you know, the need might be for someone to come here and just really dig in and figure out, how do I support the good work that is going on and add to and enhance that? And I would love to come back after today and talk more about that question, just, just to have more of a sense of what's actually happening. I'm looking forward to, to learning today.
Thank you.
Can you please give examples of quality programs and/or educational policies to improve the quality of instruction that you've implemented in another district? Can you give, excuse me, give us examples of programs that were not successful and describe the course of action you took as a result?
Well, that's a big one. I will, I will try to get through all of that. I would, I would suggest that let's, I haven't used Dedham just as a, you know, as I've been there for the last seven years. You know, when, when I arrived in 2016, the charge from the school committee and the superintendent was, you know, we're, we're really concerned about the elementary curriculum in particular. So my work really immediately focused there. I don't think it also is, I think that may have been related to my hire there, having all of the elementary experience that I did. And, you know, right away, in terms of making improvements to instruction and to our programs, the first, the first thing I really did was kind of put on the like, okay, I need to get in here and learn exactly what's going on. So I met with every one of our elementary teachers three times across the course of that year to really gain insight into, hey, what's going on? Like, what, what is your reading? Like, you know, I had them map like, hey, what are you doing in reading and writing and math in September, October, November, December, January? Because I was trying to figure out like, well, do we even know what we're doing? And it was crazy because our 28-year veteran teachers got as far as like, you know, February. And I was like, oh my God, like, our veteran teachers are struggling with, you know, what we're doing. So right away, I knew that we had really serious problems. I mean, forget the program. We weren't even clear on what it is we were expecting kids to know and be able to do by the end of the year. So we immediately started to bring in programming at the elementary level that really firmed up the core reading, writing. We had a good, a pretty good math curriculum in place, so we just kind of left that alone for the time being. But we got the units of study in reading and writing, which is a Lucy Colkins, you've probably heard of this, as the, the reading wars are ramping back up again in, in the state. But we got that in place very quickly. We also paired that up with Wilson Foundations, which is like a phonics phonemic awareness, you know, helping kids kind of do the decoding part of reading. And we got those in right away and at the same time, as we were building towards the implementation of those in the 2017, 2018 school year, we also restructured a good bit of the district's kind of personnel that were, that were there to support our educators in training and ongoing work throughout the year and bringing on all these new programs. We knew this is going to be overwhelming for our educators. So we, we brought in a whole lot of FTE and we reconfigured how they were going to be deployed in the district and what their responsibilities would be. So that took the form of instructional coaches that worked directly with our educators and students and curriculum coordinators. We needed people who are directly responsible for that pre-K through eight curriculum. And knowing that, you know, moving from the elementary, we were going to have to get right up into the middle school and start to retool there. So we designed the coordinators to be pre-K through eight folks. So I would suggest that as we moved towards COVID, that was picking up a whole lot of momentum and doing really good things for kids. And we were seeing that in our assessment results. We were seeing that just in terms of the continuity when you visited classrooms across the district. You know, my also, you know, my hope is that kids come away from the Dedham public schools with a continuous learning experience, right? That they all have some shared base. So we were starting to see as we visited our classrooms across the elementary level, kids getting access to the same content, kids getting access to the same language so that upstream, when they get to the middle school, we have kids who are not only prepared for middle school, but frankly, you know, teachers who have to differentiate for a skill gap that used to be here and is now here, right? It becomes, it serves everyone very well. So I would say that, you know, that felt really successful. That obviously took a big hit when we, when we had to close and we are slowly starting to repair from that and that's taken some time because, you know, it was not really well-established at the time, right? So that, that's really tough. And I would say in terms of the, something that did not go so well, I, I think that the, you know, the units of study have been a really tough sell at the middle school level. We, you know, we immediately, as we saw the success right away start to build, we were like, great, let's get this up. We got to move this up into the sixth through eight span because again, the, the curriculum there at the time was really heavily, and it's, it just was what it was. It was what people were doing. It was like novel study, like, all year long. And what we saw right away is that, you know, there was not as much direct skill instruction that, that we thought was important or strategy instruction in the classroom. Lots of whole group instruction, you know, things of that nature, things that we, you know, again, our teachers were working very hard, but they were also working without coordination and direct curriculum support and coaching, et cetera, and so forth. So getting those structures in place, but that, that was a very difficult sell for our middle school staff and I think I, I was talking to some parents from Newton who are working on getting a curriculum advisory in place in their district. And one of the, one of the things I learned to bring it back to here is like, we moved quickly. And looking back, I would have moved a little bit more slowly in that front to build a little bit more, you know, kind of, you know, use the word buy-in, but just to build everybody's understanding of why this was important a little bit differently. So if, looking back, like, I would have slowed down a little bit and yeah, like I said, just taken a little bit more time to, like I did with the elementaries. I didn't do what I did in meeting with those teachers three times. I mean, it was a lot, but it was really worthwhile because it built that buy-in and I was listening and learning and I could have done a better job there.
All right. So given the stress in young people's lives today, particularly social, academic, financial even, and the pressures they face, how can educators in general and a superintendent specifically have an impact on the emotional wellbeing of, of our kids?
That, that's real. That's a good, that's a great question. You know, I, I think that the, the best thing that a, you know, a superintendent or a district leader can do is do everything in their power to lower the stress level of their teachers and their educators, right? Because that's what we bring, we bring that to the classroom, no matter how much we try. Like, if we are feeling socially, emotionally, you know, mentally just taxed, that's going to come into the classroom in some way, shape or form. It just does. And it's, again, it's no criticism, it's human. So I think one of the best things we can do and one of the most powerful things we can do is look for opportunities to not make, the, the work is never easy. It just, it isn't. Education is really challenging, super rewarding, but how do we make the work meaningful? How do we make the work, how do we streamline work? You know, so for example, like, we have a 35-member district leadership team and seven of them are principals. So 28 of them are regularly emailing principals with like, I need you to do this, I need you to do that, I need you to be aware of this, read this, read that. And the principals are just like, hey, I'm running around the building trying to attend to the social, emotional and mental health needs of my students and my teachers and I can't attend. So it's like this double whammy for the principal, which is, I know I'm not meeting the expectations of the 28 people who are emailing me because I can't keep up. And if I do that, I'm going to not meet the expectations of the people who are here with me in the building. So they're also in this like, I want to do well by everyone, I, I can't. So one of the things that, you know, again, it's just like these simple little tweaks of like, okay, 28, if you need something that, the principals to either be aware of or do something, that comes to me and then I'm going to send out a weekly digest to the principals. I'm going to digest all of that and I'm going to say, you need to act on these three things. You just need to be aware of these. Be aware of these in the next 12 months. Like, you know, just so helping, because again, it's, it's all a matter of, the 28 are not principals. They may not, they may have been principals at some time, but you know, if you get away from the role, you sometimes forget that, well, that's the principals running around. And I think the same is true for our educators or frankly, for the school committee. Like, I'm, I'm about to put the same thing together for the school committee, right? So something happens at the school, I notify the chair and for the chair, it's hard to get to send six other people and make sure that they get that information. So again, it's like going the other way, like, we're putting together a shared space where I can communicate so everybody gets the same information and the chair is not stressed about or getting, you know, the, why didn't you tell me about this? But again, getting back to our teachers, again, it's about structures. So when we put those curriculum coordinators in place, you may or may not have ever looked at a Lucy Colkins unit of study in reading or writing. The, what teachers teach is this many words embedded in this many words. It's, it's, it's a ton to digest. I taught it myself many, many years ago. And one of the charges to the, my humanities curriculum coordinator at that time was, I want every single one of these units before the teacher has to use them, like boil down into a very easy to use, here are the lesson objectives, and I want to link to every single, all the materials. So all of those units of study before the teachers ever had to use them were in a, we were in a Google domain, you know, in Dedham. So they're all in these really easy to access Google Docs that very clearly spell out, here's the progression of lessons, here's a live link to every single resource you need to execute this. So we get this, it just, again, it's, it's not, it's not magic, it's not, but it, but it makes the work of the teacher just a little bit easier. So getting back to the social and emotional piece, right? And the mental health, everything that we can do to make the work just a little simpler for the teacher, I think translates to wellbeing in the classroom because they are, they feel better and they can lead the classroom better. And again, I think structurally too, just providing, you know, making sure that we have time. So we didn't have time built into our schedules for social, emotional learning and just like that daily check-in or twice daily check-in with kids. So at the elementary level, morning meeting, at the middle school level, kind of homeroom. So we very quickly, early on, before COVID, I mean, before all of that, we made sure that in every schedule, there was protected time every single morning for kids and teachers to just check in. How's it going? Like, how are you? Let's connect, let's make sure we know one another and build community. So those are just a couple of things, but I mean, it's, I think the, the role of the superintendent is to, is to model wellbeing, but also create the systems and the structures that support wellbeing throughout the district everywhere.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. If you can think back over the last 12 months, what is an example of a difficult conversation or question that you have navigated that you would characterize as politically charged? Could you please describe the situation, who you involved, when you were managing the situation and what you did and the outcome?
Over the last 12 months? So one of, one of, a very difficult and politically charged situation, we, at our high school, this was this past fall, the, the timing, the exact timing will, will not come back. Our, a few of our department heads had written a grant for a diversity talks kind of speaker series to come to the school. And one of the authors that they had selected to come to the school had published some things that were pretty controversial, like, pretty tough. And that, that immediately, once that got out into the community that that's what was happening, became super highly charged and rightfully so. I mean, I understood why people were upset about this. So, you know, the first, you know, when this started to kind of come unglued a little bit, you know, the first step is like, hold on, let's make sure we understand exactly what's going on. So that kind of, again, curiosity, like, okay, what, how exactly did we get here? So, you know, my work immediately was, okay, take me back. Because I, you know, again, I'm, I'm not a micromanager. Like, you clearly, you put this grant together, so take me through the steps of, you know, writing the grant, the grant approval, author selection, like, why? Just help me understand all of this. And at the same time, concurrently, starting to, you know, I was getting a ton of emails from different parents within the community. So just, you know, I operate very much like, okay, let's come in, let's have a conversation. So it's always, you know, I, I don't, I don't get into a, a back and forth about who's right or who's wrong and why this is important and what this does. You know, it's a, come on in, let's talk and let's have a conversation about what's concerning to you. So I spent a lot of time talking with different parents, always inviting, you know, I, you know, I probably received 40 upset emails and, you know, I would say probably six people chose to come in and take me up on the offer. So I had some really productive conversations with those six. Ultimately, the author did come and, and it was a super productive experience for the students who chose to participate, looking back on it and kind of taking it all apart. And, you know, I talked with, you know, obviously the high school principal and our department heads, like, you know, we, we as a district could have done a better job of communicating about what this was, why it was and what we were hoping to achieve because, you know, the, in the absence of providing the information, people, some, they, they create the narrative, right? They write the narrative. And the narrative was, you're bringing this person in to expose our children to this really inappropriate poetry. And that was not at all the intent, but in the absence of saying, here is the intent, it was a reasonable leap to make. So, you know, it was, it was really difficult, but again, I think, you know, most things are relatively, first of all, most of our issues are, like, 98% of them are some kind of communication broke down somewhere. And this was no surprise there, but also 99% of them are resolved when you just listen and, and hear people out and...
That's the bell schedule.
That's the bell.
So I, I think I was just wrapping up that, that response. I think it was a, it was politically charged, it was difficult, but I think we came to a place as a community where the community felt heard and we learned a lot about how to proceed in the future with these kinds of things in a way that was, that would hopefully not wind us up where we were.
Yeah. Yeah. And how have you addressed requests for sensitive information from the media or, you know, concerned district citizens? I know you're kind of maybe more on the media side.
We, so we have a, we have, we have a part-time communications person who we employ for these purposes, right? So obviously I'm, I'm heavily involved with what is said, but she manages kind of the outward facing, you know, here's, you know, if there's a, if there's a request for a press release or a comment on something, we put that together and then she handles that with the press. And we get, we have a ton of, well, let me reframe that, not a ton. They have, they have decreased in the last 12 months, but many public records requests for all kinds of information. So, you know, there's obviously, there's a lot of sensitive information that we release. But again, my, my position on all of this is, look, we, there's nothing to hide. So whatever it is you're looking for, we'll happily provide it and you don't...
No, no music.
Have to go through, I would, you know, you don't have to go through that public records request if you don't want to. Just come ask. Like, we will provide the information. I just got one yesterday about the turf field replacement at the graduation. So, you know, we, we are quick...
Our Westwood High School, today is Friday, March 24th, and it is day five.
This is life. It's all good.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, where we just stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence.
I think we can continue.
Thank you. Please repeat it. A reminder to students, please...
Oh, she's going to talk. I would just keep talking, honestly. I'm a little worried about time.
Happy to. I defer to you.
Yeah.
So I think I was getting back to the, you know, we have, we have nothing to hide, you know, and so transparency is really important. So I think, you know, one of the, one of my efforts in the last really three years as this kind of, the, the climate has become charged around what we're doing with kids, why we're doing it with kids in classrooms. So we have really ramped up our efforts to just be more transparent. I think that the, you know, the, the how, this was the conversation I was having with the families from Newton yesterday. The, as we pour information out and just get it all out there, the requests are coming down, they're decreasing because it's dispelling the myth that there's some nefarious agenda or something strange going on that we're not telling people. So I think that there's the kind of the reactive, we're seeing less of it because we're putting everything out there, but the learning is like, if we had put this all out beforehand, this wouldn't have been a problem. So, you know, or maybe it wouldn't have been as much of an issue, right? So we've also really restructured school committee policy. So that curriculum advisory that the Newton families were asking about, that is something that I advised we get into policy. So it was a very clear statement from the committee, like, hey, we hear you and like, we're going to codify this and make sure that this happens moving forward. So we have this curriculum advisory. That's just one example of a, a group that now works with the community to make sure that there's transparency around issues that the community is concerned about. So again, we think we know what, but I don't know, let's ask the community. So right now, that group is out working in our schools, conducting focus groups, you know, with the PTOs and in coordination with it. Hey, like, what, what do you want to hear more about? What would you like to know? And where would you like to get that information? You know, so there's also, we're doing a lot of work in terms of just thinking about, we have family liaisons, which are multilingual, like, that are, we have so many, we have 27 languages in the Dedham Public Schools. So we have contractors who are members of the community who work with, you know, to families, making sure that they understand everything that we are putting out there and that we are understanding what their needs are. So those people are also integrated into this work of understanding, like, what would you like and how can we better support your understanding of what we're doing with students? So it was a, it was tou, it was tough, but we learned a ton and I think we've got really good processes, policies and procedures in place to make sure that the, the community understands what they would like to understand moving forward.
Thank you.
Sure.
So you already kind of alluded to some of this, but it's an important question. So our school leaders must be champions of inclusion. How have you advocated for diversity, equity and inclusion among teens or individuals who do not yet understand their value and what specific actions have you taken that illustrate your commitment to student and family belonging?
I'll go, I'll go back again, like, with, you know, when we, so back, right before we, it's like, it's so weird how COVID is like this, like marker. So in the 2019, 2020 school year, we settled our educators' contract after, after a pretty tough negotiation. And as part of that, we, you know, Mike and I, the former superintendent, we were really I, the former superintendent, we were really pushing for codifying the need for culturally responsive training for our teachers. And we, we got that into the contract, and then all other contracts followed, and we established that, look, everybody's gonna have a minimum of fifteen hours of really direct professional development focusing on how we build inclusive, welcoming, belonging, environments that encourage belonging, and, and support for all learners and all members of the community. That was like the, the first real, like, effort that we made at that time to, to make this a priority. And I think, I talked about this in, I think, my first interview, but I, it was like such a, not an aha moment, but once we had it all codified, I was like, oh, boy, now, we gotta, I, I'm the PD, like, I've gotta do the work, I've gotta make this happen for five hundred employees, how do we do that? And that, that evolved into, you know, as I, as I looked at how to potentially do that, and not only just logistically, functionally, fiscally do it, but how do we do it in a way that's meaningful and, and, you know, really situated in the community, and building something that is sustainable and really going to serve the community well? And what that evolved to is, we, we really need to hire a person, we need to have a person who is directly responsible for the, the leadership of this work within the district. So, that translated into what is now our diversity, equity, and inclusion officer. So I was able to, at that time, you know, really craft the job description and think about, like, okay, like, how, how is this person gonna really get into the curriculum, the teaching, the, the experience of students and families in the district? Now we, you know, we, we post the job and we close our schools, so we hired this position while schools were closed. So there was, there was obviously, like, that was, that is what it is. So we, we come back to opening the schools, and as it stands right now, we have, we, we focus this work immediately in the six through twelve landscape, where our children are more often than not, they're, they are opening their eyes, they're looking out more socially, and they're more acute there, because the kids are struggling with identity and struggling with interactions with their peers or with their teachers. So we really started to focus the work there, and that training is going on for our students and for our teachers, it's led by students. So we have ten high school upperclassmen, juniors, and seniors who are trained by an organization and facilitate the conversations with our teachers. So we've got, we are now in our third cohort of teachers, primarily at the middle school level right now. So I think, you know, getting back to, there, there's the work that is training and helping everyone understand why this work is important, and what you bring to the table, and how that can affect kids and families within the district. And again, how can you yourself also come to, again, I think it's that empathy, it's that curiosity, how can you understand what's coming into the classroom and into the meetings that you're having with families, and, and how can you be a great support to all learners? But then, again, secondarily, like, so there's, there's the training aspect of it, and again, then there's just, sometimes there's the structural pieces of this, and making sure that we're doing everything in our effort to make sure that our policies, or everything in our power, to make sure that, you know, our policies, our procedures, everything creates access for families. So I, you know, I kind of pointed to the, the family liaisons that we've put in place through the school committee, through the budget process, where we have a, a group of key members of the community who are there to ensure that our families, for whom their, their first language is not English, can access. Reducing our fees, we have cut over a half million dollars in fees over the last five years. Now, that's, that's hurting us now in FY twenty-four. However, that has really reduced barriers to athletics, it has reduced barriers to transportation, it has reduced barriers to AP participation, like, it's, it's just, you, you, I, I think I was saying this, you know, in my first interview, like, it's just got to be at the core of your decision-making and your thought processes, because if it's not, if it's, if it's not a question of, hey, is this equitable for everyone at, at the base, it's, it's gonna turn into something that is not. So I think those are just a couple examples of, like, you just have to have it as a lens, and you have to help others develop that lens over time, and it takes time, and it's hard work, and it can be, yes, it's challenging work, but it's the right work, and I think it's, I don't know, I, I think it really, I think we've done a good job, I think we can always do better, and we've got a long ways to go. But, I'm pretty proud of what we've done.
Next question, so, the school committee and superintendent, there's some things that are very clear, roles, responsibilities, there's some things that can be a little ambiguous. Do you have any examples from your time, either, can be any time, where there was some ambiguity or maybe a challenge between kind of the role of the school committee and the role of, say, central office, and how you navigated that situation? Or how would you handle that situation if you thought there was some ambiguity in the future? You don't, you don't have that example, it's, you know, how you would think about that, something like that?
Well, I think, I think, I mean, there's, I, I'm trying to pick, you know, they, they happen all the time, because there's, again, you have, you know, over three thousand people reporting to the schools every single day, and there are issues that either the committee becomes aware of out in the public and needs you to be conscious of, or wants you to be aware of, which is helpful, or likewise, there are things that I need to get to the school committee. So, you know, I err on the side of, like, you know, I'm always checking myself with the chair, like, so is this number of phone calls normal in your experience? Like, because I'm calling all the time, just like, hey, I want you to be aware of, and con, you know, just, so it, this gets to kind of like the, I believe that there has got to be a really open line of communication between the superintendent and the school committee, and, and for me, that has been directly through the chair and the vice chair, we have seven, so it's a, it's a little larger. But, in terms of the blurring, I mean, I, that's, that's a tough one, because it does get blurred, because parents, or frankly, teachers may be coming to committee members with operational issues. So then it just becomes like a, how do we help, you know, how are we constantly framing our work as superintendent and committee members as a, my responsibilities are financial, they are budget, they are policy, and they are oversight of the superintendent? And, and the operations of the schools are through the superintendent? So how do we help, we, you know, Mike and I, my former superintendent, we used to do role plays with the school committee every summer, just like, you know, somebody grabs you on the soccer field, and like, how can we all, how can we collectively as a team manage those kinds of community concerns effectively, right? So I just think it's a matter of, and, and I think it's just a matter of being, I, I think I, again, I go back to the first interview, because some of you, like, just being humane, right? Like, and, and human, like, hey, did I handle this in a way that felt good to you, committee member? Was that, was that helpful to you? And, and how can I help you moving forward? Like, you got cornered by this parent or this teacher who was very upset about the play? That's one that's going on right now, there's a whole lot of disagreement about a play that we're putting on, not in terms of the content of the play, about the financing of the play, and who should be paid for what, and, and, you know, I'm hearing about it from all sides. But, you know, again, I just think it's like, we, let's, let's talk, I know you're hearing from some families and the teachers, let me help you understand from my perspective and figure it out.
Thank you.
Sure.
Could you tell us who you see as the most critical stakeholders for public schools in a community?
Oh, wow. And that's like, that's like, we all are? I mean, I know, I, I don't, I don't wanna like, I don't think you can minimize anyone, I mean, yeah, it's, it's, I mean, you need, you know, obviously, you know, the committee are critical stakeholders, you know, in terms of the people who are the voice of the community and shaping the policies and the budgets, and choosing and evaluating the superintendent and all of that, but then, like, your teachers, your educators are huge, families are huge, the kids, are we listening to the kids? Like, you know, as, I know, you know, a lot, so much of the surveying that we do in schools is like grades three and up, you know, like, and I'm like, well, we, you know, the little ones, they, they have a lot to help us understand too. So I, I don't, I'm not, I'm not trying to avoid the question, I just, I think it's, I think it's everyone, I mean, and I think that's also part of what makes the work of the superintendency, and frankly, the school committee so challenging, right, is because everyone's voice is valuable. And you're constantly trying to thread the needle, which is like, okay, like, I'm hearing, you know, where are some of this, where are the similarities, and where am I hearing enough, you know, kind of coming together the voices that I can do something that's gonna benefit the most people and, and satisfy the most people in the community? It's tough, but, yeah, everybody, they're, they're all critical. I mean, and again, it's even our, you know, people who don't have, you know, you don't have kids in the school system anymore. So how do we continue to make sure that people in the community understand the value that the schools are adding, when we're no longer adding value to their children directly? And some of that is communication, and some of that is like, how do we engage them? How do we bring them back into the schools? How do we make the schools a community center that, that lets them know, like, hey, this is an important resource, and when we're asking for a new building, this also benefits you, you know? So it's, yeah, I'm, they're all critical, is my answer.
Thank you.
So you became interim super in December, and right at sort of the beginning of budget season. So walk us through the stages of sort of the, the budget process, how you would handle it, who do you engage, when do you engage them, what conversations are you having with them? And specifically, you know, we know that there's a, it's a very public process, so how do you balance the public piece with the, with the conversations you need to have?
Yeah, so I'll go back, so we start, we start in October, and the, the, the beginning of that is really, so we, we have a, we have a budget subcommittee, a three-member subgroup of the, the broader school committee. So, you know, there is, there's initially just like a, let's sit down and go through the calendar, here's, here's the sequence of events, and make sure that, you know, basically, we're, we're working backwards from town meeting, like, we've gotta get, all of these things have to happen, and it's pretty, I mean, it's a pretty standard, you know, calendar of events that happen, but it's, it's unbelievably time-consuming, but it's also critically important, right? So, so along the way, so we start with the budget subcommittee, just making sure they understand what's, what is coming. And really, it, it becomes first a, kind of a, at the central office level, just a, so where exactly are we, you know, in terms of, if we were to take fiscal twenty-three right now and roll it over as we are for fiscal twenty-four, what does that look like? And what does that mean in terms of just like a bottom-line figure, if we apply steps, lanes, coals, and everything, and just, you know, you know, reasonable, you know, kind of inflationary adjustments to supply lines and utilities, et cetera? So we first get just a quick, like, okay, here's very broadly where we are, then it goes to meetings with, I mentioned, that thirty-five-person leadership team. We meet with every single one of those people first to scrub the personnel line, right? Because personnel are not static. It's like, are all of these people still in the same seats? Do they still occupy the same FTE? Like, right, like, what, what has changed as of, you know, we're, we're generally trying to do those right as we pull into the beginning of November. So, for, it's kind of like a reconciliation, right? Like, okay, here's what Munis, our accounting sys, our, our software system is telling us, but here's what the people who actually know what's happening are telling us. So we get that reconciliation complete, and then it's a process of, with those same thirty-five people, what are, what are, what are your needs? Like, as you talk to your various folks throughout the district, whether it's principals talking to their teachers, you know, department heads talking to their teachers, et cetera, what are your needs? You know, are there pieces that are not in fiscal twenty-three that we need to be thinking about for fiscal twenty-four? So it's, then becomes a process of, okay, here's the base, what might we be asking for additionally? And then really, you know, prioritizing, so we get all of that information in, and then in a typical fiscal year, we would be prioritizing those needs and making determinations with the central office and with the principals, with our leadership team about, okay, what, what would we put together in a, in an initial proposal to the budget subcommittee, right? So it's this process of getting, now, that's a typical fiscal year, like, this is not. So there, immediately, we knew there was no room, we still want to know what your needs are, so that we can articulate the things that we are unable, just unable to do at present, so, so that we're clear with the school committee and the public about that. But we knew right away, there was just, it was just not at all going to be feasible this year. So thi, this is a little bit of a different fiscal situation than we have had in past years. So, but getting back to your exact question, so from there, we bring that initial proposal to the budget subcommittee, and, you know, it's a discussion of just, you know, where are things, what are the needs, what are we anticipating for the future? You know, this year, it's been just extraordinary this and extraordinary that, so helping the budget subcommittee understand very clearly, before we get really out into the public domain with all of this, like, what exactly does it mean for gas and electric next year? What, what exactly do these, this fourteen percent of special education tuition increases mean for us in dollars and cents, so that, that they understand that very clearly? And then, you know, we go through the general vetting of the budget, and we, we move back from, you know, through our work with the budget subcommittee, we reduced from our level service ask by about a million dollars down to a six-point-nine-five percent ask, we were at eight-point-seven-six for level service. And six-point-nine-five, I was actually, I was in front of the finance and warrant committee on Tuesday night. So there, you know, there's, there, we go through the standard, budget subcommittee says, yes, we are gonna support six-nine-five, which was like a miracle from where I sit, like, an absolute, like, I woke up and I got the greatest gift ever, because that's unheard of, I mean, it is unheard of, but I, I had talked previously about, like, I just feel like that, that was such a, an affirmation of the trust that we have, like, it, it felt amazing. So, that's in front of finance and warrant committee now, but getting back to between here and there, there's a, there was a lot of public conversation with the school committee, helping the school, the broader school committee understand what this means, and then certainly with our educators, as I'm getting around the district and meeting with different faculty, talking about, like, look, here's where things are, we just want you to understand. Because again, like, you know, the teachers, you know, they have wants, and they have real needs in the classrooms, and it's, it's hard to, you know, when you're not intimately familiar with the dollars and cents of, and how the process works, you've gotta get out there and try, do your best to help people understand what the landscape is. So I spend a lot of time, I spend more time now than I did before, but I, I've always been really involved, because I, I find the whole process fascinating, but leading, it's been a lot of fun, and I, finance and warrant committee on Tuesday, it was, it was a blast. That was great, we had like, it was awesome, we've got a great budget book, I'm really proud of that. And again, I, I, when I walk away with under a dozen questions about a six-point-nine-five percent request, I feel pretty good about the clarity that we've been able to provide in the case that we're making, so, it's, anyway, I, I hope that-
Yeah, that's, that's very helpful.
Thirty-five's a lot of meetings, though, it's, yeah.
Thirty-five leadership team, I know, it's a lot of people.
Yeah, yeah, it is, sure.
Please tell us about measures you took in a previous or current district to maintain or enhance student and staff safety. What are your thoughts and experiences with lockdown drills, and what would your response, both short and long-term, be if a student were rumored to have a gun at school?
Whew, well, let me, I mean, we, it was, I believe it was on Valentine's Day, just, we had a, a swatting incident at Dedham High School, where we received a phony nine-one-one call, which was a, I got the recording afterwards, it was pretty scary, right? A person saying they have a weapon, and that they have bombs, and that they're entering the school, and the nine-one-one call ends with, like, recorded gunfire, like, unbelievably scary, right? So, you know, the, I have, I have a great, a lot of experience, I was a principal way back in, I think it was two thousand twelve, with Sandy Hook, and like, all that came, it was awful, right? All of these pieces, so, you know, we, as a principal, you know, you're, you're constantly, you know, I, every single morning, walking the perimeter of the building, are the doors secure, is everything latching properly? Just, you know, just the basics of, like, just, are we doing everything that we can in, in a less secure world to secure the kids in the building? You know, and just being vigilant about drills, communications about procedures, making sure that they're updated, making sure, you know, just, I, I, it's simple stuff, but there are the little things that make a difference when you have to respond, and you're, there's a trainer, I can't remember her name off the top of my head, but she talks about how in stress, your anxiety, your IQ drops, like, fifteen to twenty points immediately, you know, so we wanna make sure that things are clear, practiced, and easy to access. So, you know, as, as assistant superintendent and now superintendent, you know, we make sure that we have, we have a district-wide safety team who's constantly, you know, meeting and focusing on, you know, again, same things, you know, perimeter security, surveillance systems, operate, are, do the PA systems in our old buildings work properly, so that there's notification immediately, you know, to our faculty and staff, should there be a problem? We, the swatting incident, you know, again, one of the things that I learned right away, I, I, like, we, we got the call, I believe it was at ten fifty-five, and immediately, the, the building was phenomenal, the police were outstanding, I mean, they, they locked it down immediately. The kids, my, my stepdaughter's in the high school, like, she was, you know, Mr. Kavanaugh came over the PA, and like, you could tell he was a little uneasy, but he was really calm, and like, it was okay, and we were gonna be okay, that's good, that's what I wanna hear, right? That, that our educators, and I got a lot of great feedback from families too, that, you know, certainly feedback that was like, I heard about this from my Ring camera, not you. You know, which, that's one thing, but, you know, but so, feedback that was like, hey, the communication could have been more quick, but also feedback that was like, hey, you know, Amos, Mr. Sanderson down in the woodshop, like, he did such a great job of making sure that my kid felt totally calm during this really awful situation. So, that's important to me, you know, making sure that even in difficult situations, our staff are calm, cool, and collected, I think that's my, like, mantra, and it was as a principal, like, you just, you can come into my office, assistant principal or whoever you are, and just let it go, out there, they cannot know, they've got to know that you, you've got this. Come, I get, coming back to the swatting thing, you know, I was, we got the call at ten fifty-five, I had a communication out by, I think, eleven thirty-five, I had like a half hour, and I was like, yes, nice, man, like, good! But then I get the, I'm like, oh, man, I was like, last guy to the party. Everybody knew, because again, Twitter's firing off, the Ring cameras all up and down the street are sending notifications to the homeowners, like, it was, it was so fast out there. So, you know, we've already started to- So, you know, we've already started to get up, we have, we use Power School, I don't know what your student information system is, but we can send text notifications. So we're already like, all right, we, we've just gotta have an on-demand, right-away, quick get-out communication. But, you know, so there's like all, there's so much to learn from an incident like that to thank, again, feel like I hit the lottery, like it was a swat, it was not real. So as much as it was incredibly anxiety-producing and difficult, we learned a ton. And again, it's, you know, I'm happy that we have had the safety team in place and we've been getting those pieces back after COVID, but we, we've got a, we've got a lot of work to do and, yeah, it's tough. But I think you just, you know, again, it's, you know, making sure that you are methodical about just the, you know, are we making sure people understand procedures? Are we checking our facilities and making sure that they're secure? And do people know what to do in an emergency? Sure.
Good. Why don't we go give it you some time now, a few minutes, to see if there's any questions you have for us?
Yeah, I do. I mean, I, I was, you know, your question earlier about, you know, the needs and like kind of what your thoughts are, I mean, that's certainly something, as I was thinking last time, I was like, I would really like to know that. So, yeah, I'd be curious just from the committee's perspective, as you think about the next five years, you know, what, what are the needs and what are you hoping for and what's the community hoping for?
What's a start?
Dory, yeah, sure. So I would say, as I kind of step back and think about the big picture, what first comes to mind to me is the, the teaching staff, who I think, I mean, all of us have been through a really, I think, rough period of like three years, right? But I think about them being able to come to the classroom, feeling really confident and supported, and being kind of socially and emotionally well themselves. And so I think one of the needs that I'm thinking about over the next, you know, the most immediate future is about the health and wellness of our educators, because I do think that, that comes down to then how kids are feeling in the classroom, right? So that's first. And then I would say, second, I think a lot about our community as a whole and where we can come to, I think about it, you know, sign, kind of like as a Venn diagram, like we've all got things in, in common. And I think we need to focus upon that common ground and then think about other ways that we can kind of meet in the middle, even when we don't fully agree. Everybody has different value systems, nobody's gonna be the same. But I think we do need someone who can kind of identify that common ground and, and raise that up a bit.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would build on that and say, and you mentioned this a lot today about communication. And I think, you know, what we have found is that communication and transparency with the community is critical. And I think, you know, finding the common ground and then communicating to people, you know, what that is, what our intents are, what the superintendent, you know, and his or her team is, is just critical. I just think that so much of the misunderstanding or distrust is sown because people don't understand motivations and intent. And to the extent we can mitigate that, I think is, is a, is a key piece.
I think the only thing I'd build on, I think, and I may have mentioned this the first time, is just, I think, look, we have a, I think we have a good foundation here, a very good foundation. You know, we have some things to address, but just kind of continuing to push, you know, that next level innovation, what's next, you know, how can, you know, Westwood continue to be a leading district and really encouraging the team, you know? And we have, I think, a great principals, great central office. So we have a lot of great people already in place, encouraging them to, how do we work together to kind of continue to push the next, the next big thing? So is education's different than thirty years ago? It'd be different, certainly in thirty years, but different even in five years. So continuing to push forward.
I don't really have too much to add, I think they covered it, but I think just the emphasis on the need to keep the momentum going, that we have, as Tony said, a great team in place, great educators, and a lot of kind of exciting things happening. So, so to keep that forward progress and maybe accelerate it a little bit would be fantastic.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Well, and building, building on that, you know, I, I'm also curious, you know, I, I've been in Dedham for seven years, I live in Dedham now, and I, I have a great sense of what makes Dedham Dedham. And I'm, I'm curious just, you know, what, what, you know, I, I've, I do my grocery shopping in Westwood, I, I eat at lots of local restaurants, I go to the gym, I spend a lot of time driving through and, you know, I've been in Westwood a lot, but like I don't have, what makes Westwood Westwood?
I think it's, it's a small town and it, it, it really has a strong sense of community. I think it's, it's very rare that you go somewhere and you don't know anybody and you find connections all the time, even if you don't know someone. So I think that is our strength and I think it can also be a challenge for us. But I think that's one thing that people in Westwood are proud of. A lot of people moved back here after, you know, growing up here, going out into the world and coming back to raise their own families. And I think that's a testament to the town, it really is. It's a, it's, it's sort of geographically tucked away, a lot of people don't know about us, even though we're, we're pretty central. And I think a lot of people like it that way, you know, we sort of have our community. And, you know, I think to Dory's point, again, the common ground, there is more here that unites us than divides us. I get that sense from us. I don't know, what about you guys?
Yeah, no, I agree. I think I've seen so many, you know, families go through kind of ebbs and flows in life and the, a number of times I hear from families that say, you know, my neighbors, my friends from school, whoever, just really stepped up for me in that time. And so I think that sense of togetherness regardless, I mean, there are moments where people just completely put aside their differences and are like, wow, that family really needs help. And I think it comes back to us being small and just really caring about each other.
And I think too, the support for the schools and for children, like when we were voting on the new school building project, a lot of older adults who, you know, children may have grandchildren at, at this point, were still so supportive of the project and, and the need to, to keep investing in the schools. So I thought that was pretty neat.
That's awesome.